What's up, Clamath Falls? This is Mike.
What's up, Clamath Falls? This is Dave.
What's up, Clamath Falls? This is Commissioner Andy Nichols.
Thank you for coming back. Nice to uh to see you officially in in position and uh and doing the work.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me back. I'm excited to come talk to you again.
Always good to have you on the show. And now I think it'll be it'll be interesting to get your insight into uh what's gone on the first six months on the job. So.
Yeah, it's um definitely been learning from a fire. Say that. Um there's I I did I did take my time, work really hard and study throughout the last two years, you know, since the time I I decided this is something I want to do. I went to every public meeting and with every commissioner's meeting to really try to wrap my head around everything that was involved in the in the position. Um obviously, I have a a background and and a passion for the the public safety arena, and I felt comfortable there. But there are so many other things like budgets and land use, all these things that that I didn't know a lot about. And I've learned that being a county commissioner, you've got to know like a mile wide and an inch deep.
Is that what um a jack of all trades but a master of none sort of thing? I can't even imagine what what you anticipated it being and then what the reality was, what you finally sat down and had everything thrown at you all at once. So.
A lot of learning. The a good thing I can say, um I've been attending what they call County College. It's put on by the Association of Oregon Counties. That is our our s- all all the counties are a part of the Association of Oregon Counties. And the association itself lobbies on behalf of all counties to the state and federal government. Um for where all counties and a lot of areas, counties align, especially when it comes to funding stuff. Um so the Association of Oregon Counties puts us on and every month for the last six months, we've had a session in Corvallis or Salem. And when we go to these sessions, you get a whole bunch of presentations over a three day period on everything I was just talking about, a mile wide, an inch deep. So you you might get a session on public land use. You might get a session on public safety, on OSU extension, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that's been very beneficial, um not just in the learning aspect, but also networking. Because it's the entire class of new county commissioners in the state of Oregon together.
Oh, okay.
So you get to meet each other. You get to make a lot of connections in other counties. And then being at the Capitol, we are often interacting with the legislatures and making connections up there. So the County College experience has been um good, and I've learned a lot and didn't cost Clamath County taxpayers hardly anything because I got a scholarship that covered pretty much all of it.
Oh, good. Good. So I uh I saw that you had a kind of a bullet list that you brought along with us as far as some things you wanted to go over. And um we had talked about some questions that we had. I think we'll just kind of integrate those as as we go along uh with your topics.
Absolutely. Um I I I see one of your things says state of the county. And and that's a good phrase. I wish I would have put together a state of the county talking points, but I I definitely can't talk at least my perception of where the state of the county is. Clamath County is awesome. It's my home. It's where we're all at. I love Clamath County. The state of it is good. Good. There's obviously a lot of things that need worked on, as there always is with any entity of government. Um goods and bads. The the bad is our budget and our budget outlook, and and we can get in and talk about that. Um the goods, though, are everything else about Clamath County. The growth we're seeing, um the the housing market expanding, the the base expanding into F-35s, Lake Owana projects, Spence Mountain project, probably the biggest good we've heard in in the last couple of months was in the water arena with regards to the opinions released by the Department of Interior regarding discretionary and non-discretionary water use. And that related to species, species is discretionary, let me get this right, species is discretionary, and water delivery for the project is non-discretionary.
Yep.
So at least for the next four years, it looks like we we're gonna produce.
That's a huge win.
Yeah.
For a lot of folks, a lot of folks.
Now, there's a lot of work that that people at the Clamath Water Users and Congressman Benson's office and and people in the the water policy arena. There's a lot of work they got to do over the next four years to codify some of this in legislation. So the pendulum doesn't swing if the administration ideology swings.
And I think that was kind of the problem in the past is that we would get two steps ahead and then policy would change and we'd get three steps back. And um yeah, I saw that Jean Souza and Ryan Clewer and some other folks were just back in DC, you know, working on this. So great job on those guys' part, too.
Yeah. And a shout out to the Clamath Water Years have a new director. Her name is Elizabeth Nielsen. She replaced Mr. Simmons. Um she has got a long history in the water arena, super sharp, super bright lady. Um and I had the privilege about three weeks ago of going up to Salem with her. And and prior Commissioner Dave Hensley, the three of us went, introduced her to a bunch of the legislatures in the Oregon Legislature and talked about water quality and climate and natural resources and power. Anyways, shout out to her. She's she's a new new person in the arena here locally, and I think she's gonna do a lot of good.
Well, I know you suggested that I reach out to her and I intend to and just I've had a crazy month and a half or so. And so now that life is finally settling down, Dave has been busy, too. We're gonna start reaching out and getting more and more folks, you know, like that on on the program if they're willing to. But uh yeah, it good to hear what she's got to say as well. How how is the reception? What is the climate like for when I don't think Clamath County is necessarily a favored county in Salem? And I could be mistaken there. It's just the impression that I get. But you it's treated well when you go up there?
I yes, I would say absolutely. And and I've been listened to and we've had entities that have done really good things for Clamath County. I think you are right. In the past, the east side just kind of gets overlooked. You're a rural east side county. Um you you know, we're not the same player as Multnomah County, your Clark County, your Lane County. But we are because we we are a huge tax base. We have lots of natural resources. We're a giant piece of recreation. The National Park on the west coast is in our county.
Right.
Tourism, there's there's all kinds of things that make Clamath County relevant. What has helped, though, last year, a a delegation came down here and visited Clamath County and had tours of agriculture, industry, and government, and housing, and everything. And that that is planned again next year. So we're getting some of those urban legislatures that some of those districts, Multnomah County, are very, very small, that geographically, large population, but very small geographically. And and they don't necessarily know what it is that we face down here as far as challenges just what it's like living on the east side vice the metro area. So getting those legislatures here has happened last year, will happen again this year. And even recently with um we had both our senator and both senators and the congressmen have done town halls here. And those have brought legislative delegations from the state legislature down as well. So we're doing better at highlighting Clamath County to our legislature. And so they can better understand the the challenges we face because of the policies they enact.
Okay. Well, good. Good. I mean, at least we're on the radar. We're not a afterthought anymore.
Correct. And and I've been up there four times in the first six months. Um and each time I'm up there, I've gone to just about every legislature's office. If I wasn't scheduled, I just barged in and at least introduced myself, said, this is who I am, I'm from Clamath County. So politics is a lot about relationships, building relationships with people, even people you disagree with. And that's what I've really worked on the last six months is try to try to build a lot of relationships with everybody.
Well, dialogue to me is key, no matter what. Yeah, I kind of did a little one-off episode here not too long ago. But if people would just talk, I don't care what side of the aisle you stand on in that, you can disagree on a lot of things. But I think a lot of people would find you have a lot more in common if you just have a calm, open-minded conversation, you know?
You're right. And and the truth is, most of us agree on 90% of stuff. And it's the 10% of things that that we all get stuck on, and they're usually a big deal thing.
Yeah, they are.
We're very passionate about that 10%, but the the truth is, most of the stuff we actually tend to agree.
Yeah, yeah.
Circling back, though, when I talked about bad, one of the first things I had mentioned was the county budget. And if you watch the papers, if you listen to the rumors, it's it's kind of all over the place. The county budget's up. And you're gonna hear all kinds of reasons that the commissioners don't know how to spend money. We we blow our money out. We spend it in the wrong places.
We need to have our own Doge.
And and those criticisms are fair. Everybody should criticize government. And and I not only do I expect those criticisms, I want them. That that shapes our decision-making. Um so budgets, budgets in general, for for you and I, a budget is it it guides how we spend, right? Like what what our priorities are. Well, it's no different thing in for government than it is for you and I, with the exception, county governments are mandated to have balanced budgets. So we can't deficit spend like the federal one, right? Can't spend money we don't have. We could borrow money, we're not, thankfully. But what the budget document for the county really is, is more of a philosophical document or a moral document. It is, how are we going to prioritize the money we have? Where do we want to spend? And throughout our budget session this year, we prioritized it in public safety. That is not to say that there isn't shortfalls because there is. And and the way we prioritize it is has the potential to snowball into more problems down the road. And here's kind of the crux of the issue. We take in about $12 million in property taxes. That is stayed flat for several years. Now, there's numerous reasons for that staying flat. People would, the general layman would look at our community and say, well, there's more houses, there's more business. Like you gotta be taking in more property taxes, or not. Reasons for that, though, things like dams get removed. Now they don't pay a property tax. The pipeline that runs through East County, the federal government devalued that by a billion dollars. So when they devalue it, that decreases the amount of property taxes.
Right.
Right? So tho- those are some reasons. Other reasons, uh Measure Five and Measure Fifty. So your tax rate is fixed for for being paid $1.73 per thousand property tax. That is fixed. That cannot change ever, period. It won't change. What that does is create all these districts, special districts. So when you look at your property taxes, you'll see your property tax, and then you'll see like mine, I I pay for this vector district, this fire district, this district, this weed district, you know, so on and so forth down. Um and those districts were mechanisms. You can't raise property taxes, so we gotta create a special district to then collect tax for a specific purpose. Which isn't a horrible model because the people get to speak on it each time.
Right.
But it also complicates things for county government with how spending is done and prioritized, who who are the haves and the have-nots. We can't, it makes it really hard to equalize services across the county because this area is paying for a service and this area is not. And a lot of times, the area that's not paying for it receives it anyway. Fire is a great one. We have all these fire districts in the county. And then we have a whole bunch of lands that are what we call unprotected lands, meaning they're not in a fire district. Well, if you have a house on the unprotected lands and your house catches on fire, the nearest fire district's going to respond.
Okay.
They they are. Like, we are gonna help. We're not saying, sorry, you're SOL, we're gonna let your house burn down. That doesn't happen. So you have somebody benefiting from the fire district who doesn't pay it. So the districting thing creates lots of minutia issues. Then you get back to the Measure Five, Measure Fifty piece with assessed values. So the only way that that eleven and a half, 12 million dollars that we collect in property taxes increases is by growth and by value assessment. So each year, your house is assessed at X number of dollars. Well, the legislation says that can only go up by 3% a year. Well, that actually sounds kind of good. Okay, every year, things should be going up 3%. Um it doesn't exactly work like that.
My paycheck doesn't go up 3%?
No. And and our assessor isn't assessing every single property in Clamath County every year. In fact, it it they they do most of it through a computer model that gives uh what do you call that swag, best ask yes or whatever? Best guess at what it is.
Yeah.
But it also doesn't reflect real market values. So say a new house in a development is built, and it's one of the first houses built. These are fake numbers, but say it sells for $200,000. And a and then it's got its assessed value. Now it's locked in at 3% from that assessed value from here forward, right? Well, three years later, it's a really nice development. It's grown. The house down the street, the same house sells for $400,000. Now you're starting at new base levels. And so that original house is always gonna be behind that that next house. So it it the the 3% assessed value, clearly, it hasn't changed. Our our property tax intake has been right at about the 12 million worth for the last five years. It's it's up and flowed a little bit off of that, but no 3% growth in revenues that we take in for property taxes. Circling back, talking about this 12 million dollars. So the county budget has that the main portion of it is the general fund. You'll hear that word being thrown around a lot. What contributes to the general fund? Biggest thing is the property tax. That's the largest portion. Then we get some, a little bit of money from the federal government in payment in lieu of taxes. Then we get some ancillary money from the state government from lottery dollars and 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 things like that that build what we call the general fund. And those are dollars that aren't restricted. You can spend those on anything. And then we have our departments that are within the general fund. That's the clerk, the assessor, the sheriff's office, the juvenile department, the district attorney's office. Those are all general fund departments. Now, we have these other departments, like the health department is not a general fund department. The health department has a large budget that is essentially all pass-through dollars. So they get a program or a grant from the state or federal government. That money is handed down to us, restricted to be used in this specific program in the health department. So we're receiving the money, but we have no choice what to do with it.
Done.
It has to fund this program. So like the entire health department is funded through pass-through dollars. It doesn't take any general fund dollars. So and I bring this up because if your viewers on an ideological level, maybe they don't like a a program that focuses on reproductive health, for example. And they're like, why is our county spending money on reproductive health? Well, your county is really not. We are through pass-through dollars, right? And and that is a service that the federal government is telling us, here's some money, provide this service locally. So.
So our local tax dollars aren't funding that. It's
Yeah.
coming through the federal government.
Correct. And and so if there's a lot of these more controversial things with health and environmental type programs, you your county tax dollar isn't funny. Your tax dollar is, right? From the federal or state level. But the portion that your county is receiving, that that your county commissioners are receiving to prioritize, we're not spending on those types of programs. Now, we we oversee the budget for those programs and basically say, yes, you got $500, you're spending $500, you know? Um so we're we're that level of oversight. So back to the general fund. 12 million-ish in property taxes, add a couple million here or there for for some other things. Um the sheriff's office, the budget alone for the sheriff's office is over $50 million. There's some easy math.
Doesn't math well.
That doesn't math well, right?
Negative $3 million right there.
And and we haven't even brought up DA, juvenile, assessor, clerk, all these other mandatory services that we have to pay for. So how do you do that math? Well, there is one way to do that. There was a Oregon revised statute put into place several years back that allows six counties, I think a seventh county just got added. But it's all timber counties that receive what is called SRS or Secure Rural Schools. So the SRS program was developed when the timber industry went kaput. And it was money to kind of supplant all that loss of revenue from timber for schools and for county governments. So the state of Oregon receives SRS money for schools, and that all goes to the state. Um and they put it into the education fund, and they got their own formulas of how they divvy up. County commissioners have nothing to do with funding education. That is all a state function. We don't have oversight over the county school system or any paying for it or budgeting or anything. That's all through the state and through the school boards and the superintendents. Um however, a portion of those SRS dollars are kicked down to counties. And certain timber counties like us, Coos County, Douglas County, get a big portion of that dollar amount to help fund your general fund. Not, let me back up, not your general fund, your county government. And what they had said originally was those dollars were supposed to be used for roads, bridges, and infrastructure. Because that was really the area counties were struggling. They didn't they didn't have money to pay for roads. We have, don't quote me on that, but it's something like 1,800 miles of county roads, several hundred bridges, culverts, all these things. So the federal government built this program, SRS. Hey, put this in a road fund. You guys can build cushions, and then you can fund your infrastructure. Well, several years back, they passed legislation. I I wax and wane whether I like the legislation or not. I think I don't. But either way, the legislation allowed you to use those dollars for patrol function. Only six counties in Oregon can do that. I think seven now. So what Clamath County had done for several years, they would take a million or $2 million out of the road fund to supplant the sheriff's office, the patrol function of the sheriff's office. And over the years, it's gotten a little more and a little more and a little more. And then this year, with our our kind of major general fund issue, the only way to keep the sheriff's office whole to to allow them the same amount of position they've had in the past was to take $5.5 million out of the SRS money or the road fund. You'll hear people saying they're robbing the road fund, they're taking money from the road fund. We are. We took $5.5 million, by far, over double the the largest draw we've ever taken out of that fund.
It boils down to, do you want to deal with that pothole in the road, or do you want to have some patrol and crime prevention?
That's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is, there's about $70 million in that fund. 50 million of that is gas tax dollars, cannot be used for patrol functions. SRS dollars in that fund, there there's about 20 million, well, there was, it just took $5.5 million.
Okay.
So that leaves about 15 million left that could even be used for patrol functions if if we continue to budget this way. Couple problems with that. One, our road, bridge, really just our bridge infrastructure, um that the outlook on it just to sustain over the next several decades would cost over $200 million. So we don't have enough, our $70 million doesn't even cover the the infrastructure projects on our horizon. And then the other problem with it is where we're sitting right now today. The Secure Rural Schools Act has not been reauthorized this year by Congress. Um it version of it did get authorized out of the Senate last week. It's in reconciliation in the House. There seems to be good outlook that it will be reauthorized. But the the long-term viability of that program is is not there. It is definitely sunsetting. There was a lot of debate in DC this year whether they continue that program or not. And and I think the the thinking in DC is President Trump's administration, they've talked a lot about getting back on our natural resources. Let's start cutting trees again. I think he put an executive order out and had some log trucks and everything on the table and said, we've all these trees, let's get out and cut them. Which Clamath County, yeah, we're we're on board. Let's cut trees. But we we're also like, it's not like we're just gonna start cutting trees tomorrow and money's gonna flow in, right? You you gotta build the system. You gotta build the management plans. All that takes time, takes legislation, takes undoing certain legislation. So I think the thinking in DC is sunset us from SRS and get us back on timber receipts. Sounds like a great plan, but there's a lot of things outside of the power of state and local government that need to happen for us to do that. So back to the SRS piece, with us not knowing the future of that, we on on a philosophical or principle level, the question is, do we continue to pull from that road fund to support the sheriff's office? If we do that, and SRS, say, is not reauthorized or a lower amount is reauthorized, we've got maybe two years, two, three, with inflation probably two, that that money will even be there. So potentially another year or two, we could fund the sheriff's office with the road fund dollars. But at the same time, we're depleting that fund.
Right.
And then, you know, you you we were just talking about agriculture and how it's great that producers are producing this year, and we have water. Well, there's a lot of bridges out in Landjo Valley, in Poe Valley, in the Lower Project, Merrill Millin. Well, these bridges that, you know, if the if we don't, most of these bridges were built in like the 40s and 50s.
Right.
And they got like 14-inch timbers under them. And if you drill into side of these timbers, a lot of them, there might be an inch before you get to rock. So these bridges are getting old and need updating, and that costs a lot of money. So in a couple of years, you could see us in situations where we can't afford to replace these bridges. Then they become weight-restricted. And now the hay truck's gotta go another 20 miles around the other side of the valley to get there. So it's not just we're 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 spending, I think people like to say, you have $70 million in the account, and you're telling me you can't afford cops? Yes, that's exactly what I'm telling you. Because I'm under the philosophy that that $70 million is our savings account for our roads and our bridges and our infrastructure, and it's not enough. So that that's kind of a brief overview of the general fund and the general fund problem we face.
And just the ques- so like fines that are generated by the sheriff's office, you know, through traffic tickets and whatever enforcement they do, does that money go directly back to them, or how is that?
There is a formula.
It's not enough.
No, so there's a formula, and and I get the breakdown monthly from justice court. Like um and and we get a share of even ODOT for the way stations. Um but all these citations and fines and forfeitures and all that stuff, um there's formula for cost sharing. So so everybody that's participating gets a little bit here or there. Um this year, this last year for revenues, we took in $290,000 on fines and forfeitures. That's not a lot of money when you look at the larger portion of the budget. So I I've heard it, that that when we were talking about this public safety district stuff, a lot of people were saying, well, you guys just need to get out there and do rate more tickets, and and that that'll bring in revenue. It doesn't work like that. And then you think on a more philosophical level, you don't want a cop writing you a speeding ticket when they're unable to respond to the burglary at your house, right?
Right.
What what's their priority? Their priority is responding to crime. And and we're we're struggling to do that right now because of resources.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I've I I it's probably not a surprise to you. I I know you watch the program. I've been kind of an open critic of our sheriff's department. I do think there are some some issues there that one way or another need to be addressed. And I I do have property out in Bonanza still, and I had thought about voting for it. But when I see what happens here locally, where it's fully funded and and how things are are handled, I I couldn't vote for it, you know?
That's fair. So I I will say this about the districting concept, that it was started in East County. The the idea was if you could pass a district in East County where likely the highest demand, lowest resource availability is. If you could pass it there, then you could replicate it and do a district in North County, and do a district in West County, and potentially another urban-type district. potentially another urban type district, was at least the, the thinking. So it, it, there was a, a really deliberate effort to try to do this in East County and it failed miserably.
Seventy-eight and a half percent.
Eighty, twenty essentially, yeah. And, and so I had a lot of people, you know, it, it's no secret that I ran on a public safety platform. I really, that is my goal is to improve our public safety services in the county. And to be a part of that along with the DA and the sheriff and the community corrections director and everybody involved. All of us want the same thing. But it failed miserably. And so people are like, oh, are you angry about that? No, why would I be angry? Like, I, I, I believe in our system, I believe in our process, I, I put my life on the line for almost thirty years. No, I, I, I would never be mad that people spoke. They told us, the leadership, that that's the wrong direction. So is all it did was re-motivate me. I will tell you what I did election. I laid in my bed till three in the morning, typing and typing and typing, new thoughts, new ideas, new plans, new directions. Cause all that election told me was this isn't the way we want to go, find a different way. So that's, that's what I'm doing now and what I'm working on.
I think that's your trouble because I think once you get one and you're trying to get, you know, your north district and all that, that'll fall in line. The hard part is the first part, because the main hub would be Klamath Falls. They don't live out there.
Yeah, so if you live out there, you feel like you're subsidizing leasing in, in the urban growth area, yeah. And I used to, I did, I, that question came up and we would talk about it at the county hall. I'm like, you're right, it, it, it looks like that and there will be a small factor of that at least initially. And no plan is perfect.
But honestly, that was eighty-nine dollars per year for, I, I thought that was honestly a very reasonable number. If you're gonna add, add services. I wasn't against the tax whatsoever. My perception though of, cause I used to live in Bonanza, outskirts of Bonanza, well, Bligh Mountain, honestly. And my perception of how things are handled currently is what made me vote against, not the additional cost, but how things are or aren't handled locally through our sheriff's office, uh, is what made me vote against it. And I know you don't have control over that, I'm just offering a viewpoint, you know?
No, I, I.
Why my, my vote didn't go that, that way.
And I think it's incumbent upon us as elected leaders to hear that loud and clear and, and really do some introspection about how we can better deliver the limited services we can provide. And I don't necessarily know what the answer is. I, I do, I will tell you so that, that night of the election, my feverish writing all night, turned into a concept that I've written and rewritten, written and rewritten numerous times now. But the, the concept is a public safety task force, citizen-led public safety task force. I pitched some concept and bylaws to our local public safety coordinating council at last month's meeting. And they all have it for review, we're gonna come back and talk about it again next month. But essentially the concept is twenty or so citizens from all parts of the county, all parts of walks of life, industries, socioeconomic backgrounds, or whoever we can get. Because getting people to engage in these things can be tough as well. But I would like to get a good cross-section of people that represent the citizens of Klamath County. And then take these twenty citizens and have a, the large committee, the public safety committee or whatever word we want to use. The idea being the focus is going to be on structure, infrastructure, service delivery, gaps, overlaps, technology improvements, and then the biggest one, funding. And then divide it into five subcommittees or so. And the subcommittees then focus in on specific areas like the sheriff's office jail operation, the sheriff's office patrol operations, community correction, the DA's office, the juvenile department. And so they can take those smaller areas and do a deep dive into the policies, how they're being run, how they're structured, how they're funded, all of that. And I think multiple things will happen. One, I think citizens will learn that some of these things that they don't like are inherently built in by law at the state level or the federal level. And that there are, there are things we must do and there are things that we can't do that really constrain a lot of the complaints people have with our system. But the biggest piece I want people to look at is what are we providing? Is it what you want us to be providing and how do you want us to pay for that? One of the questions I think with the East County thing, at least in my head, you know, it was, there, there was a number, I think it was five deputies and a sergeant and a code enforcement officer. Where does that come from? You're gonna get several answers. Uh, well, it's based off of historical needs or it's based off of some FBI mandate for officer per thousand or something like that. I would rather the citizens tell us what they think or at least advise us, give us their thoughts about what do you want your sheriff's office to look like? What do you want your jail to look like? What do you want your juvenile department to look like? And then at the end of the day, how do you want us to pay for that? Because if we get a bunch of smart people in the room, let, so the, the, the current administration of the sheriff, lots of years of experience, they know how to police, right? They know how it's done, they know how it's been done. And they know how to run a jail and how it's been ran. Doesn't mean that there isn't better ways of doing it out there. And I'm not knocking how they're doing things now, that I hope people listening don't say that I'm beating up on how they're doing things. No, I'm not. What I want is I want citizens and people with different expertise to come in and look at it. And you might be surprised at some of the ideas they get offered, right? They look at how our jail is being run and they look at the, the infrastructure of the jail and the personnel structure of the jail. You get somebody in there that's got, you know, a business background that has, you know, structured or restructured large companies, they might come in and provide you with some Doge-like efficiencies.
Right.
Right? And, and even if they don't, just the citizen involvement is huge for me. One of the reasons I think that the East County thing failed and the past attempts at, at sheriff's office or jail levies have failed in Klamath County is because the citizens don't necessarily understand the, the full breadth of the problem set and what's going on. And then to your point, they just see that they don't like the service they're getting. So they're like, why would I, I ain't giving them no more money, you know? So I'd rather get citizens involved because twenty doesn't seem like a lot of people. But if this is a twelve to eighteen month long project, say you're on it, Mike, and week one, you talk to five people, you've got a platform, you talk, by twelve months in, maybe you've contacted five hundred people. Times that by twenty, each of those are talking to a friend. So over a year, you start to get a lot more buy-in, a lot more citizen involvement, a lot more citizen understanding of the problem set, how we're dealing with it and approaches to it, if that makes sense.
It does, it does.
So that, that is at least where my mind is going. I'm, I'm gonna get feedback from the local public coordinating council. And, and just so your viewers are aware, we have, it's mandated in legislation. We call it LIPSEC, Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. And it's got your, your sheriff, your DA, judges, juvenile director, community corrections director, Oregon State Police, city police, all the players basically in the safety arena. Sit on this council. And so I want to embed the citizen committee within that council or under that council. So you have the subject matter experts there to, I guess, provide some guide rails. Because, you know, Mike, you might think it's a great idea, like, you know what, we're gonna lock everybody up. Sheriff can come in and tell you, hey, Mike, by law, we can only do these certain things.
Right, yeah.
So we've got the experts there to, to guide the citizens in this endeavor to ultimately figure out what we want our public safety to look like and how we want to pay for it.
I really, really wish, and that's, I'm sure budget is part of the problem, but that our, our sheriff's office would have a spokesperson or somebody that would be, I've reached out, I don't know, half dozen times, I'd love to get their perspective on things because and you and I know one case that we've discussed that I'm not gonna bring up names or anything, but the perception isn't always that great and of what's going on. And when you can't get the other side to offer their insights into it, it just compounds the, the misconception, if there is any, about what's going on, you know, and.
I, I guarantee you if I looked at Sheriff Mitchell right now and said, would you like a public information officer? He would say, yes, please, give me one, right?
And I'm sure it's not.
And if you look at me and say, would the Klamath County like a public information officer? I would say, yes, please. And in fact, we've talked about it internally a lot. That's a, it's a missing link in, in the county right now, a public information officer. Because that is, that is how you get information out of people, that is an expert that is, got their pulse on the people and what they're, I go back to that general fund again.
Right.
A, a public information officer, I mean, if, that, that's probably a ninety to a hundred and ten thousand dollar a year job. And then you fully bake that with benefits, that's, that's an added hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year that we just don't have the money for. We did thirty percent cuts across most of our general fund departments with the exception of public safety. And it, it'd be really hard for me to look at you as a citizen and say, well, I'm gonna get rid of a cop for two public information officers. Or two, you know?
Right.
And, and so you are right, we, we do need a public information officer at, at minimum at the county level. Even if we had one at the county level, I'm sure they would dedicate a large portion of their time to the sheriff's office, the DA's office. Because that's where a lot of the drama and question, you know, things come up are in regards to criminal cases a lot of times. And to speak to, and I'll just say it out loud, the, the Girlet case, it's been clearly all over social media for a while. And lots of different thoughts, lots of different narratives. You haven't heard much from the county. And there's reasons for that, like it, it is an ongoing investigation, right?
Right.
And, and I've said it before in public meetings, it would be wholly inappropriate for a board of county commissioners. I'm not in the justice system, I do not want to even give the appearance of tilting the scales of justice here. And that relies wholly on, on that system, the DA's office, the sheriff's office and how they work it. And, and, and those professionals, they want to be very, very careful too about what they say publicly as not to tilt the scales of justice. But that's where a public information officer would be so helpful because they're, they're really good at navigating that and understanding that better than, you know, a sheriff or a politician.
Right, right.
So that is a missing link we have and it, and it does create public perception problems, which then create legitimacy problems. And yeah, I, I, I'm on board, we need public information officers. It's just, I don't know how to pay for it.
Right, understood, understood.
So one, and I, I'll hit your deal there.
Okay.
This, this question has come up a lot over the last several weeks and that is sanctuary county. I, my, my phone blew up two weeks ago. The Department of Homeland Security on their website released a whole bunch of counties and states that were considered sanctuary counties. Klamath County was on that list. And I got several notifications that day from government entities that, hey, you've been labeled this and some of our partners and associates. And immediately I responded, asking questions, why, who?
Yeah.
You know, what, what specifically? And I got no responses. We don't know was, was the initial response. And then the site came down. Not the site, but the named counties came off the site.
Okay.
And we, we really haven't heard back from Homeland Security, the White House, anybody yet what their criteria was or their whys. In the interim, I talked with our county council, we did a, a deep dive into old county proclamations and policies. At some time did some crazy board of commissioners assign something. There's nothing, we, we have, we, we, there's no designation of Klamath County as any sort of sanctuary county. And the state of Oregon however, has certain laws that restrict public safety entities from working with immigration and customs enforcement. A good example would be if a undocumented person got lodged in the Klamath County jail for a DUI. And while processing them for the DUI in the law enforcement data system, it shows that they have a detainer for immigration and customs enforcement. Oregon state law says you cannot take any action. You can't notify ICE, comply with ICE, you can't do any of that. So that really puts policymakers like sheriffs, especially sheriffs around the state, in a bit of a conundrum. Do I comply with federal policy or do I comply with state policy? Because they take oaths to uphold the constitutional, federal and state government. Now, the argument would be, well, there's a supremacy clause in the constitution that says when they're in conflict, the federal law remains supreme. Okay, fair, I'm not the sheriff, I'm not the one making that decision. But if I am the sheriff and I am the one making that decision, that's a monumental decision. Now I'm basically deciding who am I gonna get money from? Somebody's gonna say, we're not giving you any money or any support or any help or, you know? And, and so you're, you, you kind of plan mommy and daddy between the state and federal government. And so rather than the board of commissioners or the sheriff coming out with some, you know, big policy, hey, we're gonna do this. I think we took the smarter route. We, the sheriff signed on to a letter with all three commissioners last week that we sent to the Department of Homeland Security asking for clarification. Is there a specific policy you want us to revise? Is there a specific area you want us to work with you in? Let us know, because we're more than, we, we want to comply with all state and federal laws.
Right.
We have no intention of telling the federal government, we, we don't want to comply with you. And, and really, what I really wanted to tell the Department of Homeland Security is, did, did you see how overwhelmingly red our county is? Like, it supports your administration, that, this isn't the county that's trying to push back. We're not Oklahoma County, we're not LA County, we're in Seattle, we're in Portland, so.
It's a tough call though, when the state and the federal laws are in conflict with each other. It's, that's, that's tough.
It is. And, and I, I'm not gonna speak for Sheriff Mitchell, but I, I would assume that he is in discussions with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. Because, you know, if Sheriff Mitchell comes out and makes a bold stance one way and then three other sheriffs in the state go another way, that's not as powerful as the sheriffs coming together as one and deciding, at least as a large majority, how they want to address this collectively. So I, I, I know that they're in talks with the state sheriff's association. I know we're waiting for more guidance from Homeland Security. And, and once we get that, I think we'll be in a better place to make policy changes if they're needed. We don't even know that right now. I don't want us or the sheriff or anybody to make some drastic policy changes that we have to undo six months from now. So the, the best approach on this whole sanctuary debacle is to have some tactical patience and wait for the federal government to tell us what in the heck they're looking at.
Okay.
Cause we don't know.
Is there any financial ramifications that's to worry?
Potentially, so we were just talking a little bit earlier about SRS. That's millions and millions, five, six million dollars plus payment levied, seven million dollars plus pass-through money for programs. We're talking millions of dollars that come from the federal government. We don't want to jeopardize that. And, and, and not only do we not want to, I will, I will speak for me as one on a principled level. Like I talked about earlier, I spent the majority of my life defending the founding documents and our process and our constitutional way of life. And, and I ain't about to risk your well-being because somebody wants to go against what those documents say. So on a principled level, absolutely, we will comply with federal law and, and all of my votes will go that way. I won't speak for my colleagues or the sheriff, but my sense is they're, they're all the same. But yeah, the worry is, is they could cut federal funding because we don't do something. My gut feeling is this is, they're, they're really setting up a fight between the federal government and the state of Oregon.
Yeah.
And the state of California. And unfortunately, we are counties under those jurisdictions. So we're feeling the heat from the decisions made out of state law. And I don't want to, and that's why we want to talk to Homeland Security directly.
Right.
Say, what do we gotta do? Help us out here and we'll help you out.
Well, it almost falls in line, kind of like the FEMA came down and the flood plane up by Chillicothe and all that.
That was the whole county.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, once, once it comes down from the feds.
Yeah.
It's the same bucket. You you either get federal funding, you raise your, you get the the flood insurance, or you're not covered and.
So that that's what that that's what the the crux of that was, was people were upset because the flood plane maps had changed. Which puts potentially your house in in or out of a flood zone and affects your insurance.
Right.
And there we I wasn't on the board of commissioners yet, but I went down to the fairgrounds that night and there were lots of people that stood up and were very upset about it, which understandable. I would be too if it affected me. But like you said, at the end of the day, we were kind of handcuffed. We could say no, but then when the next flood came and we had a major event, they would say no.
Right, right.
It's kind of like we would get our insurance canceled if we don't do the necessary upgrade they require.
Yeah.
But crime, that's one you got on there. We can we can talk about. The 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 crime issues in general. And and this is going to be very opinionated on my side with some back sprinkling.
Can I throw a little insight into why I wrote that up there?
Please do.
I I I moved here twenty years ago. And this town is not what it was twenty years ago. And I think that's why I myself included struggle so much with, again, the measure for law enforcement that for additional funding is. I know some city cops and I know to some degree their hands are tied as far as what they can or can't do. I'm assuming that probably applies to sheriff's deputies and that as well. It's just so hard, I mean. Got a guy that lives behind me. He's notorious around here stealing batteries out of people's RVs and 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 they did, when they bust him out and about, they just tell him, go home. And it just, it's mind boggling to me that I've got a.
You want to take away my local crack guy?
I mean, he's a an, yeah, he's just a known criminal around town. Uh, just like there was the house, I don't know if you were aware of it or not, on Madison that was a crime house that. And I think half of those people transplanted behind me now. And so we're having to deal with that and I'm I'm. I like my neighborhood. I like, I've got good neighbors, it's a good place to live and all that, except when you have to worry. When is that guy going to decide? He doesn't feel like going two blocks away to to steal from somebody. He's just going to hop the fence or or whatever and put me or my wife at risk. And then what's my reaction going to be to that depending on time of day or night? So, yeah, crime has just gotten ridiculous.
It has from from the property crime you're talking about, the the thefts and the low level stuff, all the way up through. All you got to do is watch the news. We've had homicide or attempted homicide almost every month.
Yeah.
Nine months, um, which is crazy. We. Our our major crimes and assaults and things are are on the rise and they're on the rise steeply sharp to include property crimes. I think the best way for me to start this conversation, though, is to talk about the good men and women we do have working in law enforcement. There's been a lot of heat on law enforcement lately. Some of it has been self-initiated heat, right, and and making mistakes. No law enforcement agency in the country is exempt from making mistakes and they all do. And when they do, they get handled. And I know Sheriff Mitchell is handling them here through the the legal processes that he can. However.
From being honest, though, when you've got twenty to twenty-five percent of a force that's under investigation of some kind, that's an issue.
It is now.
That's huge.
In in Sheriff Mitchell's defense.
And I'm not blaming him necessarily.
Been there six months.
Right, right.
And 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 we got to give him some time to institute his plans, his policies and and get things running. Um, so I think he's he's dealing with a lot of holdover from the previous administration, not to deflect and not to blame or anything like that. I just, that's naturally how it is. On top of coming into a new position and learning. I know that personally, that I'm drinking from a fire hose, so I know the sheriff is too.
So I don't want the perception to be, I'm not anti-law enforcement by any means. It's not where I'm at. I just, the public view, that's what I get, so.
And that that goes back to legitimacy and we we have an issue with that right now. And and I I know the sheriff is working diligently on it, but I will circle back and start the conversation saying, we have a lot of good men and women. That work at the Plymouth Police Department, Sheriff's Office, the BLM, the US Forest Service, Merrill PD, Lynn PD.
OSP.
OSP, there are a lot of good ones that we have and and their heart is in it for the right reason. And I can tell you from the sheriff's office standpoint, they're, to your point, they're pretty understaffed right now. And the ones that are there, they're giving their heart and soul and everything to it, and so are their families. I heard a deputy who worked forty hours overtime. So they that there are ones that are there that are dedicated.
Care.
That care, that want to make our community safe and are out there every day putting their rear on the line to to try to make this thing better. There are a lot of structural barriers in their way. We just talked about one a little bit ago, and that's budgets, right? So we we have the sheriff fully funded this year. But when you're talking about recruitment and retention. If you're a young twenty-five-year-old person looking for a career in law enforcement. And you're deciding where you want to go to. If you're going to choose an agency that is fully funded with secure funding or an agency that might get cut next year. Plymouth County is that agency that we just don't know, year in, year out, are they going to have stable funding? So that makes recruiting people here difficult. Oftentimes, we recruit people here that are looking for someone that is desperate to hire people. So they can get hired, trained, and then go somewhere else. Plymouth County Sheriff's Office for a very long time has been kind of a training ground. So you got a lot of young, newer deputies that are getting getting their feet wet per se. And once they're trained up and gone, once they're trained up, they're gone.
Right.
The OSP, they're going to KFPD, or they're going with, you know, their girlfriend to Idaho or something to a different agency. So it makes it difficult to recruit and retain when we don't have stable funding. And then when you have recruitment and retention issues that that, you know, you don't get long-term stability, you don't get long-term experience that sticks around for a long time. So those are just some of the initial challenges budgetarily. Then there's the bigger challenges. I think the last time I was on, we talked quite a bit about Measure One Ten. Measure One Ten was a measure enacted that legalized drugs in Oregon. They have walked that back. They have re-criminalized drugs at the misdemeanor level for possession. And instituted what we call a deflection program. And it's to be seen what that does. But irregardless of opinions of how the legislation is written now and what that looks like going forward. The damage sustained by Measure One Ten, in my opinion, was monumental, right? We, for five years, we just let people run away and and drugs. That leads to theft, to new property crime. And so going back to the structure and the budget of the sheriff's office, a fully staffed sheriff's office right now. If they were at every single position filled, that provides you three patrol deputies for two shifts. Three patrol deputies to patrol six thousand two hundred square miles, large county. It's it's just not enough. So you have a deputy out there on the road trying to balance three property calls and assault and domestic violence all in the same hour. So he's calling you or she's calling you about your chainsaw while they're driving to Crescent on a domestic violence call, right? So they they're they're spread thin, to say the least. And and it's really hard to get good at something when you're trying, you're basically trying to do a hundred things kind of half-assed rather than five things really, really well. And the demand out there is the hundred things. They can't change the demand for service. So Measure One Ten created a higher amount of property crimes. And also allowed the addiction cycles to go uninterrupted. So throughout that time, the amount of people on addiction exponentially increased, their property crimes increased, stolen cars, family. Violence, all those types of things that come with addiction. So structurally, Measure One Ten really set us back a lot. Created a much larger demand on the system that couldn't absorb it and still can't absorb, you know, everything that came from it. And along with Measure One Ten came Senate Bill Forty-Eight. And Senate Bill Forty-Eight, this is where, so you you're going to hear lots of people talk about, well, catch and release, or they they get them to the jail and they pump them out. Well, that that's true, or jail very much is a revolving door for low-level crimes. And it's not because of the sheriff or the jail commander or a deputy or anything like that or capacity at the jail. It's due to Senate Bill Forty-Eight, which essentially what they wanted to do is get rid of bail. I think that philosophically, it can make sense, right? So just for fake numbers, I make five hundred thousand dollars a year, you make forty thousand dollars a year. I go steal a chainsaw from Home Depot, you go steal a chainsaw from Home Depot. I go to jail, I get a thousand dollar bail, I pay it. You go to jail, you can't afford a thousand dollar bail because you make exponentially less money. Now, you sit in jail for four days waiting for court. Me, just because I have more money than you, I'm stealing more stuff, right? So they were trying to find a fix for that. And this is where you get into the very social justice arena and trying to equalize things across the board. I I understand the desire to do that, but I think that the way they did it created a lot of problems. And what they did is they.
Wrong, sorry about that.
You're on a podcast.
All right, hit the right button, good.
What they did is they they classified crimes into like three different tiers or risk categories. So if going back to that scenario before where you and I both stole something, right? And we both go to jail, rather than having a secure bail, they're going to look at you and I on criminal history or our history essentially. And say, how big of a risk to society? And then decide if they're going to let you out or make you stay. So when you go to the jail now, I call it the choose your own adventure. There's this this binder up there, it's like this big, it's the Senate Bill Forty-Eight binder.
Jeez.
And and Mike goes to jail because he stole a chainsaw. For some reason, he likes to do chainsaws. And and when you get there, they go to the crimes, they had stuff two, and they say, okay, they're here on stuff two. And that says, go to page twelve. They go to page twelve and it says, okay, do they have prior arrests or convictions for this crime or these additional crimes? And, you know, you say no and go back to page two. Or you say yes, go to page forty-two, right? So so it's this big thing that's a map that at the end of the choose your own adventure on almost everything says, release them. Release them, release them, especially for all your low-level crimes. So that creates the the scenario where, Mike, you stole the chainsaw to fund your methamphetamine addiction. And the the cop responds, catches you, does a good investigation, takes you to jail. While he or she's writing the report, you're already walking down the hill off the hill.
Calling my Uber, right?
Yeah, calling calling your buddy to go steal the next chain. So literally before the report's written, potentially, you're out stealing another chainsaw to fund your addiction. That that's why we get that spike and that's why we get that that like thinking, well, it's not thinking, that the anger that you're just releasing. But I I just want to make sure your viewers and people know that that those aren't decisions made by the sheriff, made by the jail commander, made by the arresting deputy or the corrections deputy or anybody. These are things codified in legislation, in Senate Bill Forty-Eight, that say what we can and can't do. And then the judges as well, the judges are are constrained by that. Now, judges, a little bit more leeway, but but they're they're going to stick to the guidelines that they're given to by the state as well. So when when we start looking at, say, an individual that gets arrested with twenty-six felonies for property crimes, right?
You beat me to it.
I I don't know what the choose your own adventure says for that person.
Right.
But I have a stinking suspicion that it probably says, release, right?
Really?
Well, because.
It's not a violent crime against.
What's the danger to society, right? Well, the danger in our minds, well, they're going to go keep doing this to somebody else, right? Potentially, if they're the ones that are doing this. But there's no risk of somebody getting caught in violence, those types of things. So I think likely they'd get or released. I don't necessarily agree with that. And then same when it goes to a judge, a judge is going to look at the same parameters and say, release. So it's easy to point your finger at the sheriff or the judge or whoever and say, look what they're doing. This is unjust. Yeah, it might be unjust, but you you need to call Representative Reski, Representative McIntyre, Senator Lithgow, the people that represent you at the state level. And say, hey, this is really bad legislation and here's what it's doing to our county. And I let the three of them know that all of the time. They can tell you every time they talk to me. And and to their defense, they didn't vote for any of this stuff, you know, it's the. It's the the other side of the aisle up there that's created a lot of this legislation, but they're still my representatives like you are. So every time I'm in front of them, I'm like, you need to fix this, you need to fix this. And and to their defense, we agree with.
Right. Well, I think that's where, one, I really appreciate you coming on the show because you shed a light like that. Because I've absolutely been guilty of, and you know this, um, of calling out the sheriff's department and. But the the reason I get so frustrated and I guess goes back to having a spokesperson. But I've tried and tried and tried repeatedly to reach out to them, to reach out to the DA. And I just, oh, yeah, somebody will give you a call and you never get a call back. And I know, I said it on the last show, I think it was, I'm not ABC, CBS, NBC, I'm a small-town podcaster. But we do have enough folks that seem to follow this that it it creates a certain perception. And um, I try to be open-minded about what we do on here. The same time, though, what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. And I wish I could have just, and and you're shedding a lot of light on it right now. Just a phone call and say, hey, I can't talk about the case specifically, but this is what we're up against, would have gone a mile, you know, as far as. My perception of things and how we handle it here. So for whatever that's worth, I'm sorry, I just.
No, that's okay, I.
I'm just trying to offer some insight in the the some of the things that we've.
I don't want to speak for others elected and I'm not going to.
Sure.
And 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 I'm learning to navigate this myself. I did make a hard and fast rule for myself when I started this, that I would be friendly to media. In my mind, that is how I get in front of the people. That's how I I I can talk to the people and explain at least what I see in the problem set. But it's also where I can solicit people, people can watch like this podcast and see and reach out to me, you know. And I will give my email address before we're done here and reach out to me with questions, thoughts, even more so ideas. If you've got good ideas, like I am not the smartest guy in the room all the time.
Probably are today.
I don't know about that. It may be about county government, you know, but there there are lots of people out there with great ideas and and I want those ideas to come to me. So I've got, at least for me, me as one, I want to be friendly with media. I want to have my pulse on the public and the the citizens because you guys elected me to represent you. And I feel that that is a must. When you get into law enforcement, like the district attorney and the sheriff. It gets really touchy for them individually to communicate with media and citizens because it's usually related to cases. That that's a tough spot to navigate, right? Yeah, I have my side and my story, but if I tell my side of my story, it it can create liabilities for the county. It can tilt the scales of justice, it can do all these things. I I'll speak about the former sheriff. The former sheriff, um, a couple of times released public statements that could be perceived as downplaying a victim. Or taking shots at a victim because potentially that victim was taking shots at them. So there were citizens going tit for tat. That's not a good look. And 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 I don't really think that's the way you should be going. So as much as I feel your frustration, I I would rather err on the side of less not say nothing at all, less. Not say nothing at all, rather not say anything than say something really bad.
Sure.
And to Sheriff Mitchell's defense, he's a really good cop. He's not a trained PR person.
Speaker, anything, yeah.
And and so I don't wanna speak for him, but I doubt he wants to be out there Navigating those things in his first six months. He's trying to get his office set straight. He's trying to clean house. And trying to fix the problems inside. Hopefully eventually we can figure out this funny thing and I can give him a PR person. And and he can do a lot better in that area. And again, I think if you asked him, he would say, I just wanna be really careful. And I can respect that.
Fair enough. Sure.
When I can, I can almost see this as a as a grander scale, because if if The one ten pass and whatever you do in Oregon is legal. You have a steady job, you go out and party on the weekend too much, you miss that Monday several times. You may be losing that job, then you're stealing the chainsaw. And then and then you're sitting on the side of the road just having a good time. I mean, it's a big cycle.
And then and then you gotta steal chainsaws to survive.
Exactly.
Yeah, it is.
A lot of it comes down to personal choices though, too. I've been down in the, trust me, it's been years, fortunately, but I mean, there is times I've lived on a friend's couch, you know? But I didn't steal from people.
So I I'm empathetic to addiction and the addiction cycles. Empathy doesn't mean I lack. Right?
Fair enough.
I can I can look at the persons in the cycle of addiction and feel empathetic for them and Want to change our system so they don't get to the point they are. However, just like you said, there's personal choice. And you have reached the point you are. And I think the only way we induce behavioral changes in society is to have Mechanisms to induce it, i.e. consequence. And so if you are caught stealing a chainsaw and you have methamphetamine in your pocket, you should probably go to jail. You should probably sit in jail for a little while. And there are good things about a drug addict sitting in jail. Guess what happened?
They detox.
They stop using drugs, right? Now, they might get out and go right back to it, but you know, two or three thirty day stents, maybe that's enough to get One or two people cleaned up. But I tell you what, in and out the door, that doesn't induce any behavior change. And we can, we can focus money at treatment programs all day. These people aren't gonna go to treatment until they hit rock bottom. Rock bottom is sitting in a jail cell.
And that's kind of what they're trying to implement, right? Oh, well, we go to jail. Well, in lieu of a fine, you go to this rehab program and.
So they they've got this deflection program across the state. And it's a lot like you've probably heard of the diversions in DUIs. So you get a DUI And they put you into diversion as long as you complete all of these tasks that they want you to complete, then it won't be a criminal charge. So they tried to do that with drugs. There is a huge problem with that. Because DUIs are one offs. Usually when you get a DUI, that's all you're getting, unless it's a speeding ticket or something, ancillary DUI. With drugs, though, what what actually gets cops to the drugs is usually other crimes. You know, be it child abuse or an assault or something major. So then you get this person who has an assault for and a possession of a controlled substance. Now we're in a decision, well, if we want them in the deflection program, we've got to get rid of the assault charge. Or if we don't want the assault charge, or if we want the assault charge, then we gotta stick them with the criminal thing. So it makes it really hard to ramp people into the deflection program. And the reason this is important is because it's money. That this deflection program was built and we were given money to institute it, right? And if it succeeds, then we get more money. And if it doesn't succeed, we get less money. So then you have people like the director of community corrections and the district attorney making these really tough decisions About how to prosecute people based off of money. And and I think if, I don't wanna speak for the DA, but my take so far is our DA, he's gonna say, I wanna prosecute the crime. I wanna hold the person accountable, right? But then if you go to the other side, people are like, well, we need people into deflection programs. We can keep getting money In in our budget. So I think this deflection thing was An attempt to recriminalize it. Time will tell, I guess. It's not super promising in my eyes. And and if you look around the state, you can go in right now and look at deflection programs around the state. There's not very many successful people out of deflection statewide. This is a complete yes, but less than a hundred, you know, since it's been instituted. Because again.
Out of thousands.
Again, possession of a controlled substance crime is usually tied to other crimes. So getting you into deflection So yeah, crime overall is clearly rising and you can see it with the major crimes, the homicides, the assaults. Funding for law enforcement agencies is decreasing. And laws and legislations are handcuffing those in the criminal justice realm. And it's creating kind of a perfect storm. We're not the only county dealing with it. You look at Coos County. Not too long ago, Josephine County was just like the sheriff and the undersheriff. The only people at the sheriff's office. So it's affecting especially these timber counties that are SRS funded. Depressed counties post the Timber Fall and how all that works. So we're, Klamath County is not unique in this situation. It's it's all across our rural counties in Oregon that were underfunded, overworked And and handcuffed by legislation. And so Sheriff Mitchell is Just like me, new on the job, still drinking from a fire hose, still dealing with Decisions and the aftermath of decisions that we had no part in making. But I I am optimistic. I'm an optimist person. I'm optimistic about what the future holds. I think that collectively, we can work together and change the tide. And I'll give us all a little bit of kudos. Right after we all got sworn into office, we all sat down together Said, we're gonna solve the jail issue. And we collectively as a team came up with a plan to put the jail back on track. A big reason was to save some funding. We get a justice reinvestment grant that funds basically An entire pod at the jail for all intents and purposes. And we were at risk of losing that grant. Because we hadn't had that open. We hadn't had that open because we didn't have the people, we didn't have the staff. And the previous administration, Sheriff Caver, had just kind of cut communications Between the entities that run the grant, Community Corrections and the Board of Commissioners. And so we were, we were at risk of losing this funding. So Sheriff Mitchell, Under Sheriff Smith, myself, Jail Commander Lieutenant Tripling, and the Community Corrections Director Aaron Hartman all sat down together. We compromised and came up with a plan that would get the jail back up and running, save the funding With a plan to have the jail fully opened by hopefully next month.
Oh, wow.
In that interim time, we also made some investments. That jail's over thirty years old. So we took the time that it was closed down, we, whoever thought of doing this? That jail originally had tile floors in the pod. So Big Mike, you were angry and break up the floor and now you gotta shank.
Right.
You can stab somebody. And then and then the the other pod even worse had a carpet floor. Whoever would have thought, can you imagine what a thirty year old carpet in a jail looked like? Right? So so we took this time to tear those floors out, make them just concrete, polished concrete, right? We had some some drainage sewage issues going on in the kitchen that were pretty horrendous that we fixed. So with the reduced jail operations over the last several months, we were able to move inmates around and do a lot of infrastructure work Inside the jail to prepare it by July to be fully up and running. And that that has been the plan all along. Whether we hit that target or not is to be seen. We were on course for it and then we we lost some deputies. Decided that after a couple of months of working in a jail, that maybe it wasn't for them, which I can understand. I've worked in a jail before. It's a very difficult job.
I bet. I bet.
So anybody that's listening out there, please, if you're interested in a career in law enforcement. Klamath County Sheriff's Office is usually hiring corrections deputies and patrol deputies. But last update I got, we're still on track to have all three pods fully open this summer. Since Sheriff Mitchell's come on board, we almost immediately, he, Sheriff Mitchell, was able to open a second pod. Because we were down to just one pod. And there's three up there. And almost immediately, Sheriff and the undersheriff got with the employees, came up with a new plan. Work rotation hours, all those types of things, worked it out with the union and effectively opened a new pod up right away. And those things like that, I think are things that the public didn't really see or know about. But that was monumental. I mean, essentially, week one of his administration, he opened up forty four more beds. And said, let's put some more people in jail. And and they've consistently kept those full. In fact, every weekend, I'm on a notification list for what they call matrixing. That's when they release people from jail because they've reached capacity. And it usually happens on Friday, Saturday nights, right? You get a surge of arrests and domestic violence and all that. And then so on Friday nights, I always get We're instituting the matrix list, which that, there's a process for that, kind of like choose your own adventure, but they take the lowest level offenders that are in. Kicking you out so we can bring these new ones in. But we we are at a much higher capacity right now than we were a year ago today. And we're we're on a trajectory to be at full capacity before the summer goes. So that's that's a positive light. And and as much as there's, we, the sheriff's office is struggling with the patrol function due to staffing. Really, the cornerstone of public safety in the community, in my opinion, is the jail. Everybody feeds that jail. KIC, OSP feeds it, you know, the federal partners feed it, Community Correction Probation Office. They all feed into that jail. And that's where we're holding those worst of the worst. And we can, we can have a robust patrol function out there busting people all day, but if there's nowhere to hold them. So I I appreciate that the sheriff has prioritized the jail and getting it up and running. Because that that really is the cornerstone of kind of the criminal justice process.
Okay. I know you had a lot more there bullet point wise. I didn't mean to hijack the conversation, but.
So one thing that I I feel is important to talk about, if you'll let me.
Sure.
Is just county government in general and your county commissioner, me. People, I think, don't have a good idea of what a county commissioner even does, right?
Fair enough.
Some guy we elect to be the county commissioner, to commission the county, right? There there are lots of misconceptions out there about a county commissioner. I think the biggest misconception is you see that we are the head of county government, right? So we we, just like every other level of government in the United States, there's checks and balances in power. Nobody has ultimate power. County commissioner doesn't. A sheriff doesn't. Now, if you look at the Constitution of Oregon, I think it says the sheriff is the senior elected official in the county. That verbiage is not verbatim, but essentially, he's the senior officer of all elected officials. So truly, the sheriff's the head of the county government. But ask the sheriff how the county budget works. Ask the county commissioner how to operate sheriff. Right? So we have our lanes.
Right, right.
And oftentimes, I'll get calls about other electives, you know, the tax assessor Clerk or the sheriff or the district attorney. And what I tell citizens, I'll listen. Listen, I'll take notes. If I see a way that I think I might be able to help you, I will. If not, I'll have conversations on behalf of citizens. So if you call me, you're like, you know what, District Attorney Scut is the greatest thing in the world or the worst thing in the world or whatever. But I don't wanna talk to him because I don't like him. I'll go have that conversation for you. But I'm not doing it with any power or authority. I cannot tell the district attorney how to run their office.
Right.
Cannot tell the sheriff how to run their office. Not only can I not do it, I don't want to do it or would I do it? What would not be good for Klamath County is to see something you saw last year where you had a massive fight Between the sheriff and the board commissioners. That wasn't healthy for anybody. And it got us nowhere. I mean, maybe it got us somewhere. And I'll just say it, that sheriff and his son no longer work in that office.
Thank goodness.
So so that that got us somewhere, which is a baby step, right?
Yeah.
And and so we're moving in a new direction. Got a lot of challenges in front of us. So your county commissioner, one, doesn't control other elected officials. I can have conversations and I will. Doesn't mean I'm gonna get the result you want, but I'll go have the conversation on your behalf because you elected me to do that. What do we do? We we control the budget is our biggest thing, right? And even that, I say with somewhat of a grain of salt, because I am one vote on a budget committee. The budget committee consists of three county commissioners and three citizen members of the budget committee. And ultimately, that panel of six has sixty up or down votes for each proposal that comes before the budget committee. So each department comes up and proposes their budget and then the committee votes yea or nay, right? And so your county commissioner, me, I'm one vote of six in your budget. I am one vote of three in everything else we do, be it policy changes, operational moves, service delivery. All of those types of things. So at the end of the day, we are there to oversee the government, to be your voice In the government and to vote on policy change and budgetary issues. I don't run the public works department. I'm a liaison to it. So all three commissioners, we break up all the county departments into liaison responsibilities. So like I'm liaison to the sheriff, liaison to the public works department, liaison to planning. Commissioner Minty's liaison to juvenile, Commissioner DeGrue's liaison to economic development, Klamath County Economic Development. These are just examples, right? So we all have our liaison responsibilities. That doesn't translate into I run that agency, right? You don't want me running the clerk's office. One, the clerk's elected. She's trained. She knows how to run that office. I'm just there as her liaison. I'm not her liaison, but her liaison is there to be that connecting file between The county government and that department. So for example, going back to public works, I'm the liaison to public works. I'm not an engineer. I don't know how to build roads, you know? I don't know how to do long term transportation planning. I don't know any of those things. I rely on the experts in there. They do that. They run that department day to day. And then I take input from them, I take input from the public. And then when decisions come before the board of commissioners regarding, you know, public transportation Or or any other transportation stuff, then I make votes based on what the experts are telling me and what the people are telling me. Synthesizing that information together and trying to, at the end of the day, institute your will on the bureaucracy of the government. The bureaucracy is the public works department, right? And they're direct. They're the bureaucracy. You're the people over here. They have, this is what we can do, this is what we will do. You've got, this is what we want you to do. And I try to take your will and impose it on you.
Fair enough.
That's that's really my role at the end of the day.
Kind of a project manager.
Yeah, in a way for lots of projects. And that goes back to what I was talking about earlier. No one an inch deep, but a mile wide, right? I can't sit here and tell you all the minutia of land use laws in the state of Oregon. I can't. I have a planning director who is the expert, right? And the planning director might not agree with the developer. And the planning director might not agree with the developer and guess who's in the middle? Me, to, to be the ultimate decider of who's right or which direction. So like social media, I, I've changed my social media habits a little. I would not say that I am not on it. I am on it just as much as I used to be. I don't engage. Cause I'm nervous to engage. Cause I learned campaigning, getting in back and forth on social media is.
It's a losing battle.
Yeah, I.
I still fall into that trap.
And I would tell people, it's not like, call me, call me. They won't, you know? They're just gonna say their, their, I got you thing and mic drop and they're out. And so I, I don't engage. I use my social media now to try to, every once in a while, post something that I'm passionate about or that I find interesting, but I watch. That's what I do. So all of the drama in our scanner and news page or our community page or all those things. And then the big ones, I got two hundred comments. I am no different than anybody else. Well, I am probably different because I do read all of them. I will stay up in bed at night and I will read it all. But that's important to me. The reason it's important is it gives me a pulse on what people in the community are thinking, what their perceptions are, right? And half the time I'm reading and they're so wrong, they're so off base. I don't know what they're talking about. I would never tell them that because then it would be this big back and forth, right? But it cues in my head, well.
You've probably thought that about me from time to time.
But it cues in my head like, well, that just shows me that I need to do a better job at getting out there and telling people like, here's the why, here's the why behind that, here's the why behind that. Here's what we are actually trying to do to fix that problem or come help us fix the problem.
Right.
So I do stay very engaged in social media, in reading, because it, it gives me a good sense of where the public's at. And, and what direction I should be going in.
And, and I read those same sites for the same reason. Unfortunately, I still have not wised up enough to not jump on board and have to throw my two cents in once in a while, but I'm, I'm working on it.
It's a little different when you're an elected official though, to be going on, you know, the, the keyboard warrior, social media rabbit hole and getting in fights with people like they.
Yeah.
I, I did it a little bit. So, um, I, I've talked to, so I, I wanna, I wanna address this real quick. I, I've brought up my, my good and my bad in my first six months. And I always like to start off with my bad. What is my worst moment? And, and it's debatable if it's my worst moment, but I see it as my worst moment. So in the, the budget process, kinda how it works is we do what we call budget workshops, where that's where the department comes in and sits down with just the board of commissioners. And we have a discussion back and forth about the, it's kinda brainstorming session about what the budget's gonna look like. And then we kinda give them direction and forming their budget to bring it before the budget committee later on. Well, in budget workshops, um, I started, that, that was my first time looking at these department budgets in depth. Like I'd seen it in campaigning and read through and, you know, drinking from the fire hose. But in those workshops, I was really sitting down and going line by line at what we're spending and why and how many people are aware and all these types of things. And it was a little disingenuous for me because I, I wasn't necessarily prepared in those workshops to offer a lot of feedback because I needed to take it and digest it. And this ultimately led to kind of a crummy situation before the budget committee. So there was a, a department that as I was looking through their budget, um, there was an employee that, in my opinion and the opinion of the department head after talking with them, this employee didn't need to be a full-time position. It had been for a very long time, but it didn't need to be. And so I, I, oh, that's easy. We'll just cut it to a half-time position. Well, I, I lodged that in the back of my mind, that the only next place you could do that was we'd already been through the budget workshops. The next step to do this would be in the budget committee. So in the budget committee, when this department came in to present their budget, they came in and unbeknownst to me, the employee who I was about to propose cutting their position came in as well. And stupid me, I, I own it. I didn't bother to think that this employee's position would actually put them in front of me, right? Due to the position they hold, they're in the budgetary process for that department. So it put them in front of me and then right in front of them, the first time this employee is hearing about it is on camera, live in a budget hearing that I am cutting or I'm proposing to cut their position. And I would not change what I, the outcome of what I did. The outcome was the right thing to do. The process by which I did it was kind of heartless, right?
I remember the little firestorm around that one.
Yeah. And, and, and I tried to constrain it a little bit. I, as the person walked in the room and it all started coming together in my head, what was about to happen, you know, my heart starts. And then I'm like, well, it doesn't change what I have to do. Like at the end of the day, I am the, you know, my responsibility is the taxpayer dollars and spending them right. And just because of my ignorance and newness, doesn't mean that I'm just going to blow your money on something that's not needed. So I have to kinda own in that moment. I had to own the moment. I had to take control of the moment and I had to say some things that, that sure hurt that employee. And I don't feel great about that. It wasn't like, you know, I, there was this sense when I was reading stuff on social media that, that I was like this dictator type, ah, your job's cut, your job, you know? Like that, that was not where my brain was or who I want to be at all. Those, those conversations should have happened before that. The employee should have been informed, they should have known. It didn't happen like that. I own it. Buck stops with me, lesson learned. I, I wouldn't change the outcome, right? That it still needed to happen. The process by which I got there, I, I learned. So that, that, that was my worst moment yet. My best moment yet.
Band-aid thing, just.
Yep, yank it off, get it over with.
I mean, once I realized that I, I was in a, a band-aid situation, that's what I did.
It's coming up.
I yanked it off and, and moved forward. That's all you can do, you know? And, and I haven't talked to that employee one-on-one and I, I highly doubt that employee wants to talk. I can understand that, right? They, they didn't know me, I didn't know them. And the first time they met me, I.
Cut their job.
Cut their job in half, right? I, I cut them to a part-time position. And in their defense, they had been with the county a long time.
Right.
So that, that was my worst moment yet. Um, my best moment yet, at least internally. Um, I gave a, a speech. Um, it's called a Day of Hope Rally and it was regarding child abuse awareness. I gave it to Ross Reigland and, um, there's a personal side to this from my own childhood and things that happened. And I gave a really solid, good speech and I got a lot of good feedback from it. I don't know, that was kinda like my highlight moment so far.
Good.
Being a keynote speaker there. I've spoken a lot of things, but that one just really was inspired myself, I guess.
Yeah.
So that's my best and worst so far. Yeah.
Well, good. Well, I mean, my, my, I follow along and been more than happy to, to see what you've done. I think you've done a good job. And I'm not just saying that because you're sitting here in front of us, but, um, just watching along on social media and watching the, the, uh, I don't know if everybody knows it, but the county commission meetings are televised or recorded. You can, you can actually watch those if you're so inclined, so.
Actually, if you go onto the county website, you can get a lot of information.
A ton.
They, you, you can see our entire budget and it's fairly, like, if you look at our line item budget, it's really hard to understand, but it, the, there's a, a link on there that goes to a clear gov site that really helps show you the county budget with pictures and graphs and, and breakdown. But either way, there's a lot of information on the county website, just about how county runs. You can go to the board of commissioners and government and there are tons of opportunities to get involved in our government. We have a bunch. I don't, a lot of advisory committees and boards that are set up to advise us, right? Again, for that, that mile wide, inch deep, we don't know everything. I don't know everything about planning and land use laws. Guess what? We have a planning commission. It's a whole bunch of people that are really smart at that stuff, that dive into these issues and advise us on, on the proper decisions to make. So I encourage people, go to the county website, look at how you can get involved in county government and be a part of solutions for, for all of us. And then to your point on there, there is a link to the Clamath County YouTube page. And on that page, you can see every public meeting, not just the board of commissioners meetings. We have council of governments meetings. We have, you know, when we do town halls, anywhere that's gonna be, two of us will be public notice and we'll have it on that website and you'll be able to see what your government is doing. We are extremely transparent. Um, we're just not good at promoting it because we don't have a public information officer. And as much as I would love to be that person and out there promoting the county and the person on social media and the person doing stories like I literally don't have time for that. I am meeting to meeting, to call to call. The other thing that a county commissioner is that I have learned, um, we are, I am at least the Clamath County Complaint Department.
So, because you make yourself available.
Yeah. So, so everything that can't get resolved obviously rises to the top, right? And a lot of these things are things that just cannot be resolved due to law, due to whatever. But the citizen feels that they wanna take it all the way up. That's fine. I have lots of discussions in my office with citizens and sometimes they like what they hear. I would say more often than not so far, they've realized that they got all the way to the top and then I'm at the top saying, well, here's the law, I can't break it.
Right.
I hear what you're saying, I understand it. What I will do for you though, is I will go see if I can work with our legislature and let them know that this part of the law is having this impact in our county.
Sure.
I reach back out to Senator of Clamath County, Representative Reckie and MacIntyre and tell them, hey, you know, citizens are telling me this. And then I encourage the citizen also to take their complaint to the right part of government. And, and I do that, like I did that this morning, a citizen from North County was, had a complaint regarding what ultimately is an enforcement issue. And I, I told the citizen, really, the person you need to be talking to is the sheriff's office. However, I'll still listen to you and next time I talk to somebody at the sheriff's office, I will, I will pass on your complaint, but I highly suggest you go talk to them about it. I don't run the sheriff's office.
Right.
And I'm sure the sheriff then would have a conversation or, or one of the sheriff's people would have a conversation with that citizen and then explain the whys. Like, I understand what you're saying and you are right, but we only have one deputy on right now. So, and he's working a homicide.
Yeah.
So I know that you're having this problem up there, but we're balancing priorities as well.
Fair enough. All right.
Any question? No questions came in from viewers. Should have had questions.
Yeah. Maybe if there's a next time, we can do it next time.
Please. And so my, my email address, it's A Nichols, that's A-N-I-C-H-O-L-S, Shoot me an email. If you've got questions, you've got concerns, you wanna come to my office, you wanna meet with me, you wanna talk to me about something, reach out to me. I, last time I was on here and if, I guess if people go into your old shows, I think I gave out my phone number. A little more hesitant to do that now.
Don't blame you.
If you pick up my phone right now, somebody said something to me yesterday when I sent a screenshot. I've got forty-one unread texts. And, and that's not because I'm not responsive. I just get hundreds of texts a day.
That's crazy.
Sometimes I'm like, well, don't open them until I can sit down and go through them and actually respond to people. But, and so I gotta manage it with texts, email, social media. So I, I'm, I'm kind of my own PR person throughout the day, every day, trying to manage all the communications. But please, if your viewers out there, if you got questions or you wanna give me ideas or you wanna get involved in any way, shape or form, ANichols@clamathcountyor.gov, reach out to me. Sit down, let's talk. And, uh, yeah, find out ways we can do things better. I would pitch to you guys to think about, um, running some stories on things the county is doing that could be, you could get an expert in here and talk for a long time about things like the Lake Owana project.
I would love to know more about that, honestly.
Yeah. And Commissioner Minty, like that, that's kinda her baby. She'd be a great one. She'd probably love to talk to you about it. She's very passionate about the Lake Owana project. Or the county has Spence Mountain, which is a recreational trail area that, that we're, we're working on potentially forming a larger recreation district and having that among several things be part of. Spence Mountain's a great one to, to look into and talk about. You should reach out to Clamath County Economic Development Association or CASIDA. See if you can get one of their members or their director or someone to come talk to you. They can go deep into all of the things we're doing on the economic development front as far as recruiting businesses, retaining businesses, expanding business and, and developing the economy in Clamath County. So I think you guys are a great platform and I think expanding, um, I, I, I like it. And I would really love to see you guys be able to use this platform to get information out on the good things. I know, I know drama sells and do the drama, continue. It, it gets clicks, it gets views and, no, that, but that's a good, and it, it highlights important topics too. It does. But you know, mix in some of the good things we're doing too.
And that was your original plan. This was supposed to be to point out the good in Clamath County and it's so easy to.
Fix it on them.
Well, go ahead.
I, I don't think we're trying to sell it bad. It's just the, I don't know how to put it, the bad reaches out.
It does. And, and you're right.
You know, and, and the Mike's point, you know, reaching out to Sheriff Mitchell, maybe he's not the best spokesperson that we want on here, but you know, we get denial. So i- i- if any of these people wanna reach out or we can reach out to them, yeah, no, we're, it would be nice to get some good news on here, actually. It's, it's.
I, I try to give everybody a fair shake. I really do, you know? And whether they decide to take that or not, I, for whatever reason, that's, that's entirely up to them. But I'm always willing to hear both sides of any story.
I think anybody, any elected official is probably gonna be apprehensive with media anyway, cause you just never know.
Right.
I, I'm a little different where I'm like, meh, whatever. I'm a pretty open person and, and I don't mind when I mess up. Saying, well, I really messed that up. Let me fix it.
Same here, honestly. I mean, I, you probably saw in the very beginning with water rights and I flat out threw Ri- poor Ryan Clewer under the bus and, uh, he was not happy with me, but you know, since.
Came out good though.
It did.
Yeah, it was a positive result.
Yeah. It, uh, sometimes that's the only way you can get somebody to, to reach out, so.
I, I, I sincerely appreciate what you guys are doing and, and I'm gonna maybe make some controversy right here with what I'm about to say. You have a, another, mm, different platform entity that was trying to do some local news stuff. It was ran by Chris German and I, I'd tell you what, I've had nothing but bad experiences with him. I think he is very one-sided. I think he is very tilted. And I will go deeper with anybody that wants to have that conversation. I won't, I don't think my colleagues or any other elected officials will speak to that gentleman. He's burned a lot of people. Um, and, and he probably might be the seed of, of maybe why people don't want to talk to him. They don't want what they said spun and turned and used against them and, you know, attacked for it. And that's really why I like your guys' platform, cause we can have a conversation.
Right.
When we can talk.
And the easiest part about putting this out there is I do little to no editing. It is what it is, you know? I don't wanna hide anything. I don't wanna cut things out and then you'll see, it's rare, there's a split or a cut, you know? You can tell when there's a cut in the video. I air it as it, as it's recorded because I want it to be honest. So.
Well, I, publicly I encourage my fellow electeds in the county to, to come on the show. They're, they're great. They're easy to talk to.
Thank you.
Um, I, Commissioner Minty, I'm gonna call you out right now. You're, uh, you're, you're coming up on an election year, Commissioner. You should, ooh, get your butt on the show, ma'am.
We'd love to have you. And anybody else, any other elected official and, um, you know, it's always about, there's always question, well, not always, but there are questions and, and we've had this discussion before. There's some things you can talk about, there's some they're not, and I will. And I will always respect that regardless of who's on the show. If there's things that people aren't comfortable talking about or, or for whatever reason, I'm not going to push the issue on that. I'm going to use this as a, a platform for others in the, in the, the county, the government to, to share their views. You know, I want to know. I don't care what side of the aisle you're on. Uh, I'll do my best to make sure, we will do our best to make sure it's always, uh, as fair as, as possible.
And to make another point too, I think, I don't want to say lackadaisical, but some people, when it comes to politics or elections, are a little, little lazy. They see a name on the, the ballot. They don't go through the pamphlet. They don't do their research, you know, on Google or whatever else to, to figure out who you are or the next guy is. And that's the same part to the laziness or whatever you want to call it. You guys are elected officials. You have public forums, you have a YouTube channel and it's a matter of doing your duty. You can get on there and see what the meeting was about or seeing what this and.
I agree.
Complaining.
I, I see a lot of stuff on social media about how Clamath County misspends money or mismanages money, which I don't agree with. But oddly, there was no public comment at our budget hearing. Not one citizen came in and said, hey, you're misspending money and here's why I think that. You know, they, they're quick to go out on social media and throw daggers at us.
Keyboard. Yeah.
But my door's open, my, my email's there. If you, a lot of you have my phone number already. You can call me, you can come into my office and reach out on email. And every Tuesday, when we have our weekly business meeting at one o'clock, there is public comment. Anybody can come down and you can talk about whatever you want. You want to come talk about the greatest new whiskey that you tried? You got three minutes, you can come tell the whole county about it.
I've got a tequila to tell you about, but we'll save that, we won't do that in the meeting. Well, Dave, you got anything else?
I, no. I appreciate the time though.
Yeah.
Especially with your, I'm sure you've skyrocketed on your, uh, things to do, so I appreciate your time.
No, I appreciate your guys' time. And again, I, I, I like the platform. I like the, the podcast type setting and, and keep doing what you guys are doing.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. Try to keep it as casual and comfortable as we can, so. But yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah. Appreciate it, Mike, Dave.
Definitely appreciate your time.
And, uh, the rest of Clamath Falls, what's up?
Right? Well, thanks you guys. Hope you enjoyed the show. Uh, if you have any questions, comments, um, you can pass them along to Andy at his email or you can always hit us up here at bigroostermedia@gmail.com and we can get them to him as well, so. But thank you very much. Hope you enjoyed the show and we will catch up with you next week.
Thanks.